We will call this meeting to order. Everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle Roehm, please.
Dr. Dave Bardot.
Here.
Bobby Brown.
Here.
Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Kristin Matt Miller.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
Catherine Solan.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
JD Schrader. Danny Pyatt.
Here. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have one person that has signed up. Gail Zabrowski. Just want to remind Gail that she needs to speak. You speak to something on the agenda and you'll have five minutes. Thank you, Gail.
Well, I just want to let you know, since I'm the only one signed up, I'm practicing my speech. So I figure if I do this, you guys, schoolteachers, everything, this would be a good job. You know, a good place to practice.
Okay.
So I'll practice on you guys. Okay? This is the one question I have. Okay? Who is the task force? It's not the people. Because we were supposed to gather the information and bring it to you. I did bring some. But last night, basically was told that we don't care. Not by you guys.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
So I did bring some.
Move a little closer to.
Oh.
Thank you.
This crazy thing. Oh, and I encourage you all to please speak into it because when there is more people, even another time, some of them are, you got them turned away. Please speak into like this, then they can hear you. You hired an architect and then Donovan Group, basically, to bring all the facts in. So we weren't, what we were, we were fed the group stuff and then we maybe make a decision like they did last night. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew, a small group came last night and then they asked which one of the three that they would pick and about six raised their hands because they said, for the ones that say yes, raise your hand. I did not. So if somebody says it was unanimous, it was not. So I just wanted to verify that for the record. During all this time, even from the beginning, I went to the schools and I walked through the schools with them and to find out everything for myself. And I could see right from the beginning, the push for a new school right from the beginning. And I have learned over the years that if you repeat something quite a few times, you will convince many people that we need a new school. So, so far, you can see that it is working and we're pushing hard. That's not me. I encouraged the school board, the ones I've talked to, to be and stay optimistic. Search for the truth in all issues before you make your decisions. I don't like people that are just kind of like, follow the crowd people. Or you say, whatever the committee says, I'll vote with it. That's not what you're there for. I've enjoyed talking with you and please make good decisions because even though I don't approve of some of it, that's, that's the way I stand and that's the way that you know that I stand. But I encourage you to stay strong, stay truthful to the public because you don't want me up here every time telling you that. So I encourage you to do your best and be truthful to the people. We weren't the task force. The task force really was the architect and Ms. Lori. So that's who it was. We came and we had to vote and it wasn't always for a school. So thank you very much. I have other commitments today, so I'm going to have to leave tonight or I'd sit and listen to the rest. But I have commitments tonight, but I just wanted to tell you that. Stand strong. Okay?
Thank you, Gail, very much. Let JD come on in. Okay, item number two, new business facilities, task force presentation and recommendation. Am I looking toward Mr. Leidman?
Yeah, well, technically, Mrs. Zalzowski, she has a, been elected last night as the.
Voluntold.
Voluntold. Come on, come on down, Mrs. Zalzowski. If you want to, if you want to sit, you can sit and use that mic. Okay, that's fine.
Just as long as you're in the microphone.
For you to be comfortable.
All right. Okay, so like Jake said, I was voluntold to come as a representative of the task force. And I thank Gail for coming up and speaking because I feel it's important to hear all perspectives in this decision, right? We're making a huge decision. The task force was made up of many community members who met over several months. And we came to a decision, I think it was four or five meetings ago, we voted and there were 18 people in the room and 17 voted in favor of moving towards closing the elementary schools and building a new elementary school and pushing for, or moving towards a referendum. Then we came together last night after reviewing several presentations from the Blue Design Group, a presentation from data from the Donovan Group, and we voted on moving towards asking the board to consider a 5.4 million capital, 54, sorry, 54 million capital referendum question to build a new unified school district of Anago Elementary School and address the most urgent immediate capital maintenance needs at the middle school and high school, Anago High School. That's it, unless you have questions.
Does anyone on the board have questions for Mrs. Zalzowski? Bobby, go ahead.
I'm not sure if it's for you to answer or someone else in the room, but on the handout that we have, the underline sentence after each scenario, if someone can explain a bit about the state of Wisconsin funding a portion of the total cost.
I'm going to have to defer that to Mrs. Oginski. You can have that.
So, and.
Can I make a statement just real quick? I just want to let everybody know that my son is in the hospital, so if you see me reaching around to my phone, it's because text messaging. I just want to stay up with what's going on, okay? Nothing else is going on. Yes.
And so we do have Mrs. Fosbender also online as well, so she may want to interject or even Lori around this. So each of these are the scenarios that were.
Is it possible to get this on the screen?
Um.
Yeah, I just feel like it would.
Oh, sorry.
This document, Jill?
Yeah.
Dustin, do you have a way to do that? Yes.
I think that would be helpful.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
So can I elaborate on the question just a bit?
Sure.
Okay, so last night we spoke of a unique situation that the, that the Anago District is in with state aid. And so I know that that's where these numbers are coming from, but if you could just elaborate so the rest of the board is aware of that.
Sure. So all of this information was included on the survey that our community members did participate in. And it just shows the impact of each of the scenarios and what our community members would be responsible for. So looking at scenario one, which was only building a new elementary at $46 million, it would cost our community members a total of 23. That would be after the state paid their portion of the $46 million. And it also includes the total cost with interest, which would be 68 million for the $46, $46 million elementary building for scenario one. Scenario two was $54 million with interest. It would cost $80 million with the state of Wisconsin funding. They would be covering 49 million of that and the total cost to our taxpayers would be 31 million. Scenario three is to take care of all the deferred maintenance costs, build a new elementary school. It was the largest at 61 million. With interest added to that, it's a total of 90 million. The state of Wisconsin would pay 52 million of that, leaving a total cost to our taxpayers of 38 million.
Are we talking to Kelly now or is it still Cory?
Well, we're actually on Bobby's question here first.
Yeah. So I understand the numbers. I'm just wanting, or curious on the state of Wisconsin funding, the, the promise of that or where that's coming from and why?
Kelly, do you want to be able, do you want to speak more to that? Around those, those. Go ahead, sorry.
Yep. That's based on our state funding formula, which is based on a variety of different components such as land valuation, enrollment, and spending, to make it very simplistic. And that also compares to the other districts in the state of Wisconsin, what their valuation is, what their enrollment is, and what their spending is. So these numbers are derived from our financial advisors. When looking at the different scenarios, what the interest would be, the amount of the loan, all of those things. And based on the unique situation that our district is in, in a very exciting and opportunistic situation that our district is in, we are able to capitalize on that amount of state aid that would be reimbursed to our district if we were to pass a referendum, which would increase our spending.
Does that answer your question, Bobby?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, JD?
I guess I'll follow up on this first before I bother Cory. Kelly, I was discussing this with Andy Mary today and he told me that the numbers change after July 1st and also that it's probably not locked in every year, like how the state aid changes. So how do they make the assumptions about that or the, whatever the term is that we'd be paying this off 20 years or something? Is that, so is it just assuming that we're always in that same basket of secondary or tertiary aid or how do they do that?
Yeah, so our financial advisors put these into a formula and based on what the projections would be, this is, this is the finances that they are projecting. Obviously, we know that anything can change. So you're never 100% guaranteed everything's going to be exact, which no one would ever say there's a guarantee for anything. But these are the projections that the financial advisors, who work with many districts, have put together.
But can you just be more, can you be more specific on how they did the projections? More so than just kind of saying that? Like, do they have to make a tertiary or secondary aid assumption for every year of the 20 years to assume the state is going to pay that much?
So what they did, yes, they've gone through over the years, over the projections, over the amortization schedule, over what interest would be based on interest rates. Obviously, we don't have a loan yet. We are making projec, or they're making projections. But yes, it's, these are projections that are made by a financial advisement company and they take all of those components into the formula that their company uses in order to make these projections. And they are very confident in these projections based on where their, where the formula is at and where our state is and where all of these components come in. To get an exact answer as far as how every single thing is calculated, that would be a presentation that PMA, our financial advisors, would have to dig into the details of those in order to explain it as detailed. I don't know how detailed you want me to get as far as these projections, but yes, the company takes all of these things into consideration when developing these projections for school districts all around the state.
Okay, so tax impact of $1 per thousand of fair market value. Is that for sure only the year after we pass it? And then after that, it could be completely different?
No. So that is, that is what's projected throughout the long. And I can get, I can get to all of those details from Eric Pass, our financial advisor from PMA, and his team worked on those. I can get to the detailed calculations that they have, if that's something that you're interested in.
I think it's probably worth us hearing it at some point, just so we can at least answer questions about it better. Cory, what about the third option? Why do you think the group didn't want to do that one?
We, so I can tell you why we went with the second one, not so much why we didn't go with the third one. So we had decided to go with the second option to make sure that all families within the school district had some kind of input and buy-in with this referendum. So we really looked at families who might not have somebody being served in the, at the elementary level and that they, we might not get their support in a referendum if it doesn't impact their student. Also thinking, I thought about this a lot, thinking about our parochial school children. They, their families might not vote in favor of just the elementary school because that won't impact them either, but they will have to use the high school, right? So it's, it's looking at making sure that all families, all community members see the importance and the buy-in. And I just wanted to say, because I didn't say in my first, it was a seven to nothing vote and two did abstain from voting. So it was not unanimous, but two abstained from voting on the, on the choice.
Yeah, and I should apologize because we should have noted the abstention.
Well, they didn't abstain, they just didn't. They didn't, yeah, they didn't vote. They were both there. Yeah, I don't.
Okay, so they chose not to vote?
Yes. So technically, you would say it was a unanimous of those who voted.
Okay, we'll go back to JD.
And the other thing is.
Hold on, hold on, one second. JD's got the floor.
I'm, sorry.
I'm good for now. Okay, Scott?
Um, the lady from.
Lori. Lori from Donovan.
Lori said, trust the data. She said that hundreds of times. The data showed the 54 was the solid one.
Okay.
Not necessarily the most solid, but it was solid enough. 46 was more solid.
Angie, go ahead.
So to, to kind of figure out back off what you were saying, the data shows, you know, the favoring of the, sorry, I'm going to forget, get all the numbers mixed, 54. However, I feel as though like the, I don't know, you know, if the, if the, if our community was educated more on the state's portion that they're going to pay and if that would affect their votes if, if we did decide to go for the option three. And then I guess my other question was, is, like, is there a certain portion, a dollar amount that is going to be going specifically for the new school? Versus, you know, like, how much is going to be going towards immediate maintenance projects? So if, if the $54 million referendum passes, right? How much will, of that will be going towards the new school versus going towards?
The deferred maintenance.
The deferred maintenance costs?
Well, I can answer that.
Okay.
It's just the math. So if you look at the $46 million project, the state will fund 45 million of the total cost. When we raise it up to 54, which is $8 million more, they're going to pay 49. So they're going to pay half. Of the extra. Of the extra eight. So there you go.
But I believe your question was how much of the total cost is going to go to the new school?
Yes.
And how much is going to go to the deferred maintenance?
Tells you by the first one where it's 46 million and the state's, you know, with the interest, you know.
Okay, so anything above 46 is going towards.
So they're saying 45. They'll pay 45 million of the 68.
Okay.
And down below where it jumps to 80, they're only going up to 49. So that 8 million extra, we get 4 million from the state. The, it's a higher percentage tonight. It's 45 of 68. It's probably about 73%.
Okay.
So Angie, I think what you're, if I'm hearing you, what you're asking is if, if the board goes to the 54 million, 46 million goes to the new school, 8 million will then go to the deferred maintenance.
Okay.
Is that?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing you ask?
Yes.
Correct.
Pretty good in your head.
Correct. Jake, if you want to. Okay.
I just want to make sure I have the numbers correct.
Good question.
So generally, yes. Now, keep in mind, the, the, kind of the variable here is that these projects are staged to be bid projects, which we've talked about extensively, for the value. So because the budget number is 46 million, that may come in lower is, is obviously the hopes. I mean, I think the cap would be 46 and then we would do our due diligence between myself and Blue Design Group to get those bids down. So we may come in under. And as we go through that process, we would, we would use that 46 as the benchmark and compare everything to that and give the board updates as we made progress in that bidding process. So I don't want to say that it's 46 million to the penny. There may be some variables based on the bids. But I think that 46 would be the cap and 8 million would be the cap for the two respective.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Angie?
But if, well, I have a question then, Jake, because if we get a referendum passed for 54 million and we're expecting 46 million on the school and let's say you get it down to 42 million, that's an extra 4 million that they've approved, the voters. So in my head, the 8 million for the two other schools now is 12.
Correct. I.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make.
Yep, maybe I misspoke a little on that, yes.
Angie, have any other questions?
Okay, so that is about clear as mud. So, okay.
The new building is 46 or less.
Right.
And the difference goes to the maintenance.
Okay. Okay.
So Quarles and Brady is going to help us draft this question and I'm. The, the question we're going to ask is for a dollar amount.
Right.
That we, that we get voter approval to issue bond up to that dollar amount.
Right.
So below that, we can, as long as it stays within the scope of the, the referendum question that we write, the, the dollars can, can be spent on those purposes.
Okay, so as a voter, when you, when you present it like that as a voter, if, if I vote yes and it passes, right? That we will have project, total cost with interest of 80 million, right? So, but the project cost will be 54, so are you telling me that a new school could be 40, you know, 53 and then 1 million goes, because that would fall within the scope? Because that's not what I would want to vote for. I would want to vote for.
No, that, that is not the intent of it. That, that's where, when we look at, you know, the 46 million as, as the cap of that school.
Okay.
That, that's where we would hold, we need to get that school built for 46. But if, if we are able to find some efficiencies or, or do some things, bid wise comes in favorably for us, that would have some extra dollars there. That's where we would come to the board and say, hey, we came in a million dollars cheaper. We have the authority to go to 54. Here's options of what we can do with it. You know, that's something we'd work through in the event of that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is that clear?
Yeah, sorry.
And Jake, in that bid, is there some wiggle room in case there are inflation? There's inflation that isn't specifically planned for? Don't we have the buffer built in with that bid?
Correct. We both have construction inflation built into there. And then we have what is very common practice in any construction as a contingency, just for unforeseen.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding, I'm sorry, this is a board discussion. We have to stay with the board, Jill. Kristen, Catherine or Jill? Or Dr. Bardot?
Should I? I just did, did some, I think I'm right on this, but if we go, went with the 46, the state, the state would cover 67%?
Yeah.
And if we went with the second one, it'd be 61 and the third one would be 57?
And this is kind of a one-time offering, I guess, one-time deal from the state, if you will, because, because we fall into the categories that.
With a low-spending district, yeah.
Yep, yep. So I just want to mention that so that, so, so that people don't think that this will be available.
For later.
For, you know, five years down the road, you know, if this does not pass and we try to come back in five years or 10 years or whatever, this, we would not have this opportunity again.
Does everybody understand what Angie just explained? Because of us being the low-spending district is the reason why that we're able to have this opportunity? And if this passes and we say we're going to go back five years down the road and say, well, we want to borrow more for capital improvement, we won't have that opportunity to have the low-spending, this formula.
You're, when you say opportunity, you're talking about the state contribution?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Are we, we're low-spending right now because we're spending less than 11,200 or is that?
It's because historically we've been a low-spending district.
Okay, so it's not a current year?
No, we've been low-spending since 1995, if I recall.
Yep.
And that's why the dollar was set for the student dollar to come to us was set then because we was at that low-spending district.
We went from 10,000 to 11,000 this year.
And then also because we have low property values.
Yes.
In our district as well, even though a lot of our property values went up this last year.
Yes.
We are still low as comparison to other, you know, the other districts in the states. Because I did ask that last night, if, if that would affect.
Correct.
I think historically, we've just been frugal.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we carried our football equipment in a gunny sack at one time. Proudly. I mean, I'm not saying that to be funny. We, that was a big badge of courage and.
Appeal.
We've just been frugal.
Any other questions or comments? I don't want to leave anybody out.
Was there any discussion about the tax impact increase from option two, which is tax impact a dollar per 1,000? And option three, tax impact a dollar and 22 cents per 1,000 in the task force discussion last night?
Yeah, so we discussed thoroughly all the different tax impacts. I think that, you know, when we were looking at the data and the decrease in support between the three options, that's where the task force got held up. In an ideal world, we would have picked option three, right? But we also want to make sure that this passes, knowing that we're not going to have another chance down the road. That's not to say that in, we talked about, there was discussions in the task force about five years, you know, coming through with something different if, if our maintenance needs are still there. I think the biggest thing that the task force focuses on is that we really need this new elementary school and want to get it passed. But we also recognize all the needs of the other facilities and buildings. And so we looked at the best option that was the most likely to pass. Thank you. Yep.
Hey, I think we also thought about just being upfront and saying that we may come back for the other seven or whatever it is that, you call it on the wish list or whatever. But I think we have to tell them that that's out there and we need to think that it might be an expense down the road again soon.
Correct.
Five years or whatever.
I just want to point out that, so the mill rate for the option three, the 61 million, would be 7.43, right? $7.43, which is $2.45 lower than the 2015, 2016 proposed referendum, which that almost passed. So.
Correct.
It, it's going to be less impact than, you know, if our, if property values were to stay the same, it would have less impact, if you will.
Correct.
The thing that I keep coming back to though is average house for market value in Langley County is $200,000. So how are we going to convince somebody who's on a fixed income? somebody who's on a fixed income and who's already struggling already to come up with an extra two hundred dollars a year?
Can I interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just piggybacking off of what Catherine is mentioning, um, I was going to say that I feel like it is, and I've said this before, so critical and dire of the facilities task force and the board and anyone in support to, to communicate these numbers exactly, and then also the educational impact and the benefits. It may be a hard sale. But when you do the math and look at the percentages and the state of Wisconsin funding and the long-run benefits to this entire community, um, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to put our feet down and do some work in communicating and, um, educating the public.
Yeah, I, I agree, because I'm looking at, right now on my phone, um, Rib Lake, nineteen million dollars just to renovate. So our numbers are not out of line.
Not at all.
And I think we need to really talk about that. I mean, some of these schools are, are our size and are doing tremendous things. I mean, we don't, Merrill was sixteen million and failed, but, I mean, Osceola, thirty-eight million.
I do know that.
There are, we're gonna be Division Four. That's what they are.
I do know that, um, in speaking to some other important stakeholders in the community, how they are on board, um, one being the Langley County Economic Development. I spoke with her today, actually, and, um, talking presentations to the public, um, world cafes, public forums, however we have to do it. But,
Jake, I think.
We need that buy-in from other partners as well.
Um, I kinda wanted to go back to Scott's comment about what, what items would be left over and that we may have to come back for, but I don't wanna disrupt the.
Sorry.
Kelly, what's the mill rate right now this year? I forgot.
JD, could you repeat that?
I'm trying to remember.
Well, I was, I forgot when you, the current mill rate. I was just hoping it was a little, it's very close to this, isn't it, to the seven twenty-one?
Six twenty-three.
It's,
Six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's assuming our mill rate would stay the same, that, so if you're looking at your mill rate currently and then add on that dollar, and then comparing it to what the mill rate was in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, when the referendum failed.
Right. But when you had your graph up there, we were still at lower mill rate this year than like eight out of the last ten years, right, even though it was higher?
There's a chart that was fif- fifteen years, and this is the fourth lowest mill rate in history, or third, I can't remember which.
Catherine, to me, that's our best argument. You know, it's, it's two hundred more than last year, but compared to the last couple of years, hopefully, it's not very much more than that, if that's, maybe not the best argument, but it's at least.
Yeah.
Uh, before we make a motion.
The lowest mill rate that we've had in the past, uh, thirteen years?
Or, no.
Or second lowest, I'm sorry.
Second lowest.
The lowest mill rate we've had in thirteen years?
'Cause whenever we do communicate this, I think we should put our mill rate chart on there, you know, just how it goes down so much. I just, I think it'd make people feel better when they see the, it go up a little, that it's still, you know, lower than it has been.
Put it right next to the tax college later on that thing.
Yeah.
Correct. Jake, I think you wanted to say something before we.
Yeah, I was thinking a lot about, last night, we talked about the differences between options, um, and specifically, the perception that may have been created by the fifty-four to the sixty-one and talking about the deferred maintenance or the urgent needs, or however you wanna phrase that, um, kinda left some people with the impression that maybe the items in the fifty-four were needed, and then the items in sixty-one were more of a want. And I, and I just, I've been thinking about that a lot today and, uh, had some conversations with a couple of people. And I think a good way to look at, look at that and, and stress the difference between those two columns is, those are all items that likely, in a idealistic school district that has the proper funding for maintenance, all of those items in both those categories would be, have, have been completed by now. So there's really not a, a want and a need column or a difference as far as that goes. I think the difference at where we decided on what to put in the fifty-four and what we put in the sixty-one was more on they're all out of, past their expected life, but, um, within the next few years, all those items could fail. Now, I, I don't have the luxury to have a, a, a budget, and I'm just not that way by nature, to end something's life prematurely just because a manufacturer said it should be ended. A good example is the roof on the ninety-eight edition at the middle school. That's in the sixty-one column. That has passed its life expectancy. Most districts would've already replaced that. We have not had major problems. We've had some, but we've been able to maintain it and fix it to a level that I feel is still serviceable. So I'm gonna use every day of it we can. That could change tomorrow. That could change next year. That could change five years from now. I don't know. We're, we're running on borrowed time. But I wanna be very clear that all the items on both the fifty-four and the sixty-one should have already been addressed. It's not a want and a need type scenario. It's all of those need to be addressed. It's just that I was trying to be as rational as possible and identify ones that might have a few more years left in them, but all of those items will need to be addressed within the next five years somehow, whether that's through my budget, Fund Forty-Six, referendum dollars, whatever. I, I just wanted to kinda clear that up, so that that make a little more sense.
Yeah, Jake, if you, if the community votes for the fifty-four million dollars, that's taking care of the high needs, right? Would you be able to then focus the bulk of your annual budget on some of those other in the sixty-one million? I know it's not gonna cover it from year to year, but you could chomp away at some of it that way, because we won't have so much maintenance on a new elementary building, uh, and then we're taking care of the more pressing needs in the high school and the middle school.
It would, it would certainly make it easier to work on them. I, I'm, if I'm looking back historically at what we've been able to budget for those items, there, there's no way that we'll be able to satisfy all those needs. Um, I think this board has made it very clear and made some moves to be more cognizant of that and forward-thinking and make some, some better plans on how to fund forty-six. So I think that those changes are gonna help that, but to say they're gonna cover them all, I, I don't, I don't,
I know, we'll cover them all.
Feel like, yeah, I don't, I don't think I could say that, but it would certainly help if we get the fifty-four amount. It would then help me focus on the items that are left.
Well, I, first of all, I just wanna thank, um, the task force for all the time they put in. I wanna thank Jake. I wanna thank Glenda. I wanna thank, um, Angie as the head of Building and Grounds and the other people on that committee that have put so much time and effort into getting us to this point. And thank Cory especially. I think you're at every meeting. And thanks for presenting tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
I think, Jake, we have to tell these, we have a budget, and you had to prioritize that sometime. So there's your list. This part of the list fit into fifty-four, this part of the list fit into sixty-one, and whatever we get, we get.
I think.
So it's not a matter of what's more important, but at some point, as a human, you gotta make some, you gotta make a list.
And I'm glad we're talking about the maintenance, 'cause one of the things that, and if you guys remember when we first started talking about this, um, was how do we get to the point where we have a bu, a maintenance budget that is healthy enough, right? So we don't end up in this same predicament, because the reason, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the reason was, is because the, the money wasn't there to spend on upkeep um, over the last, you know, sixty years or so, right? Um, and so, and to Scott's point where we wanna make sure that we're on, you know, we're very upfront and honest with the public and stuff, so does this mean, in order to be able to keep up with the, the maintenance that is needed on middle school to high school and the, and the new elementary if, if we build one, that we're gonna be like every other school district, where they're gonna be coming, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna be on our ballots ever so often to go for, you know, facilities, capital improvement? Um, because I, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, 'cause that was one of the pressing questions. I know I had that question when we started, 'cause otherwise, we're, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot. We're putting ourselves in the same boat if, if we don't plan for the future.
I would echo that. I've been waiting for an opportunity to speak on that specifically. I've been very open, very direct about this from the beginning of a discussion about a possible referendum to this point, that it is the district's responsibility to ensure that we are budgeting appropriately for current and futuristic capital improvement needs, um, to not repeat what got us to this point. So that's something that I will continue to stress and focus on for our district. And then I just, I'm going to share that we are comparing what the mill rate would've been when the referendum failed in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. The need has not gone away. So in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, there was a group that came in, did an assessment of the buildings, projections, cost for upgrades to the buildings versus a new build. Um, again, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, now we're in two thousand twenty-four, and we are coming with the same outcome. Different group that came in to assess?
Correct.
So it's a separate group of professionals that came in to assess our buildings with the same outcome. So it is not a, this board wants a new building, this administrator wants a new building. Again, I shared this in the last meeting. The task force started with our previous superintendent, Dr. Sprague. So this need has been identified for quite some time, um, and I'm hopeful that the community is willing to support it and have trust and open communication in future agenda items about the budget and capital and Fund Forty-Six, um, so that we can be respons, fiscally responsible. So I would love to see option three. Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, I just wanted to be back on one of the things that you said, um, with the fact that in the district referendum from fifteen sixteen, they had a projected tax impact of a dollar twenty-five for the project that they were proposing to the public, and that would've made the mill rate nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Our highest option right now, um, the third scenario, is a dollar twenty-two, and that would have an estimated mill rate of seven dollars and forty-three cents if we were to stay at the same mill rate we're at now. So just the significant numbers there, um, and just putting some numbers behind the story that you have just reminded us, reminded us of.
I think that's really helpful and powerful and can be utilized moving forward in messaging. And thank you for sharing that, Kelly. I would ideally like option three. That's what I was hopeful for, um, also knowing what the data shows. And so I will be in support of the recommendation, because, um, I trust and respect and appreciate the time that has been put in by the task force to come up with the recommendation.
Kelly, what did you say the, the, that the increase would've went to in two thousand sixteen? It was nine some, what?
Nine eighty-eight.
Thank you.
Without inflation. Straight comparison.
Yeah, without inflation.
That's a good point. You know, and as far as going back to people, that's just the reality of the funding, the way it is now, since it's an unintended consequence of Act Ten. I don't think they realize that we were gonna have to keep doing that. It's not just here. It's every district in the state is facing these kinda decisions, and they're constantly going back to the public with referendums. So until that changes, it's the reality.
Exactly right.
I, I just wanted to say one last thing. So, um, everybody, I think everybody in this community always talks about how we need this for our community to grow, you know, this idea or that idea. We need, you know, manufacturers to come in. We need, um, you know, we need a better school. We need, you know, more housing, all this ki, kinda stuff to actually keep Antigo growing and hopefully thriving and stuff like that. And somebody needs to be the catalyst for that. And I feel like the school district is the perfect entity to be the catalyst to spark that, you know, upward trend, I guess, if you will. Um, because it, it's so important. It is the, you know, the heartbeat of the community, it really is, is what the school districts are. Um, and I, I don't wanna pay any more taxes than anybody else. I, I don't. Um, I think one thing we need to, as a community, start looking at, um, is not only how the school district is spending taxpayer money, but then also how the city is spending our taxpayer money, how the county is spending our taxpayer money. So I think we need to get more involved with those, those groups and start questioning them as well. So that was, I just wanted to say that.
And my mom and I have been involved in these kinds of task force for years, and we had very few negative people show up this time, way less than I ever remember in my life. And I've been involved in this a long time. So I got a good feeling, is all I'm saying. Probably jinxed us right now.
JD?
Yeah. Trust the data, though.
Trust the data.
Knock on wood.
How is, how are they doing, just talking about maintenance on the windows? Is it close to budget or way over or way under?
Well, actually, we can't talk about that.
You can ask Jake after.
You can ask Jake after that. We're just talking about the referendum. I'm so sorry, JD. I would like to know too, by the way. This is not the time.
I don't know. It's reasonably related to maintenance.
It is not related to the referendum that's on the table. Okay, if we, if we are done with Cory Zelazowski and her presentation, we will move on to item number three, board action, task force recommendation. I will be looking for a motion, please.
Now, this, this can be changed if somebody wants to make the motion to go for the sixty-one, correct?
When a motion gets on the floor, it can be amended, um,
Right, but it doesn't have to be what is stated. It could be.
It can be whatever you want that motion to read.
Okay.
Correct.
I move the board to accept the task force recommendation as presented.
Motion on the floor by Jill to, to, uh, accept the task force recommendation as presented. Would you like to speak any further to your motion?
Nothing further from the prior agenda item.
So we are, we're clearly looking at the motion on the floors to accept the task force recommendation, and that recommendation is the fifty-four million dollar capital referendum to be held for the Unified School District of Antigo Elementary School and address the most urgent, immediate capital maintenance needs at the Antigo Middle School and the Antigo High School. That is the motion that is on the floor. So we need to direct all of our discussion to the motion that is on the floor of the fifty-four million dollars. Any discussion?
Just wanna say also, it's obviously for the new for, gated fourth also. Can't remember if you said that when you were describing it.
Say that again?
What, what did you say?
You did say the new school?
I did say the new school, yes, yes.
He was reading this.
He was reading the third one?
Yeah.
Not the second one?
No, I said the Unified School District, Antigo Elementary School. Yes, okay.
So I, I guess, I'm not sure if this is the, a spot to bring, to ask about this, but, um, I believe there was a possible large contribution to the project if, if we did go to referendum and it does pass, um, from the Blue Design Group, if I remember correctly. Is that right? Leta?
That there is a, a possibility of, um, a scholarship.
Scholarship, okay.
And, and the, the agreement was that if the referendum is successful, they would look to do a scholarship somewhere in, uh, uh, close to a half of the fees that they charged. I, I don't wanna speak for them. I know Steve's on remotely, but,
Okay.
it, it was a, it wasn't a hard dollar amount. They would do a substantial scholarship. They would do a substantial scholarship.
Scholarship, okay.
If the referendum is successfully passed.
Sure, okay, thank you, I was trying to remember the details of that, so, okay.
Can you define scholarship in this, and how you're referencing it? I think, if I'm in the community and I'm hearing that and thinking they're gonna give a scholarship to a student, so I'm just looking for.
Correct, that is the intent, is that they would create a scholarship that would go to the district to kind of, I guess, handle on how, you know, I'm sure they'd have some criteria, but we would involve it with our students. So, one of our Antigo graduates would qualify for that, the structure of, you know, if it would be multiple years or one recipient or multiple recipients, you're right. I'm not sure what their intent would be, but they just.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Good question, Jill. Any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? Okay, just for clarity, the motion on the floor is to accept the task force recommendation, which is the fifty-four million dollar capital referendum question to build a new Unified School District of Antigo Elementary School and address the most urgent, immediate capital maintenance needs at Antigo Middle School and Antigo High School. That is the motion on the floor. At this time, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Dustin, and the motion passes unanimously. Sorry, Dave, that's a little hard. Next, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.